Bobbit.
Here.
Ronk.
Here.
Hess.
Here.
We do have a form. Pat, would you lead us in pro this morning?
Yes, please. Everybody bow your heads, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all the many blessings you bestowed upon us. We come to you in complete mercy and graciousness with this outstanding rain that we received over the last 24 hours. We ask that you keep this coming throughout the spring as our agriculture economy can rebound. We ask that you keep all of our help, all of our employees safe as they go throughout their day, throughout their week. We ask that you keep all the spring breakers safe and under your guidance. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Max, would you lead us in? Is there a salute?
Yes, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I acknowledge that the agenda was properly posted in accordance with the Open Meeting Act.
Consider an act on approval on the minutes from March 9th, special meeting.
Are these two agendas the same thing?
Yes, I just, the ones a little, I was trying to make it bigger because it was so small.
Got you, okay.
March 12th, a regular meeting and March 12th, emergency meeting. You will need those under separate, we need those under separate motions. The March 9th was the Friday meeting for the fairgrounds and the burn ban.
I move to approve the March 9th minutes.
I'll second that.
Ronk, motion has seconded to approve the March 9th special meeting. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Abstain.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
Motion carried. The March 12th regular meeting is our last Monday regular meeting that we posted.
Is this the, this the?
That's the ninth.
Oh, I can sign them, but.
Yeah, okay, yeah, go ahead. So we're doing everything today with the exception of Friday's special, correct?
Right. Yeah, it's not on here. The emergency.
Oh, oh.
Yeah, it's not posted.
The one we just did Friday.
It's like a hatey track out. It's like, oh, yeah, that's right. Yeah, yeah, I don't have that one on there yet, sorry.
That was a record for me.
Yeah, I think it is.
So, the, okay, we're on the, actually, the March 9th and March 12th can be the same. Oh, excuse you, the 12th, the regular meeting and the emergency meeting, both on March 12th, can be under one motion.
Okay, got a question before we do that.
Yes, great.
We said at that meeting, and you have it properly documented, no through commercial traffic. When actually, we're going to word that sign as through commercial traffic prohibited. Okay? We talked about that, and you correctly identified that. Do we go ahead and?
That's what was said in the meeting.
That's what I thought.
And then today, in your comments, you can change that.
Very good.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the minute.
From both meetings?
For both meetings, yes.
I second that.
Hess moved, Ronk seconded, to approve the March 12th regular meeting and the March 12th emergency meeting. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried unanimously.
So then next week, will I do two minutes again?
Right, it'd be the Friday of today.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Well, thanks for not throwing all of those at once at us. That would have been.
I, I just could, I was lucky to get those, the ones I got done, yeah.
He was working all weekend. Comments from the public on the below agenda items? Do we have any comments?
Thank you.
No, no comments.
I guess, just a real quick question. I noticed there's a burn ban. Did that pass? So is Grant County in a burn ban?
We are in a burn ban.
We are until four o'clock today, and we're going to revisit that. We do that every Monday to see where we're at.
It's somewhere, yeah.
I didn't have any idea. So, is there a place where that's posted, so where we can look?
Our website, as well as, you can go to the Oklahoma Forestry. If you Google that, it'll bring up the entire state. It will tell you if it's a governor's burn ban, if it's a county burn ban, or what kind of permit.
And we notify.
You have exceptions. If there's exceptions to them, you can click on each county and bring it up.
And we notify 911 over there, and you're supposed to call in if you have a burn. You're supposed to call 911 and let them know you're having a controlled burn anyway, so they can advise you at that time, or the sheriff's office. Sheriff's Office, 911, has all been notified at that time that we passed the burn ban.
Got it. Okay, well, we always call the fire department at Manchester to let them know if we're going to do a controlled burn, just so the neighbors don't all call and freak out, so.
We do a 911, the sheriff's office, and the fire departments, and then we post it on our website and that stuff like Cindy said, so.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, down to item 7A, transfer appropriations. Do we have any? We have one transfer request from the sheriff's department to transfer $6,000 from his SHST2, which is the sales tax, to, to his sheriff's department CDS account for $6,000. And his reason is...
It's hidden. It's on there.
Yeah, let's see, yeah, where is it? It's, uh...
Funds should have.
It could be a, been, okay, funds should have been placed in capital outlay rather than maintenance and operating. This is a correct entry, okay.
So is there only one?
There's only one.
I move to approve that transfer.
I'll second that.
Ronk, motion has seconded to approve the transfer appropriations for the sheriff's department, the amount of $6,000, from SHST2 to SOCDS. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried unanimously. Motion to review the payment of purchase orders and travel claims.
I make a motion that we review. I second that.
Hess motioned, Ronk seconded, to review the payment of purchase orders and travel claims. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried unanimously.
What's this, cancel? BOA, Brandon something, February.
Yeah. Cindy, did you have them cancel that PO for Daniel Cash?
Yes, we did, because we could not get the all, he got the deal that's just, it's the food, but it, it says the food, but it doesn't say what the food.
The itemized.
Itemized, we could not get an itemized receipt.
Good lord. Go check your email, guys.
Okay.
M and O.
Oh, damn. Drastically.
Eighty-three grand.
Oh, wow.
Lots of resolutions today.
Yeah.
The girls, I said, it's not as bad as, I said, it's not as bad as it looks.
Yeah, it's more intimidating.
I dreamed about you guys' office changing. And it was, I was so confused. Where's everybody gonna sit?
Let's see, I could go ahead and have her get this ready for the payment of my trailer. Cindy brought the paperwork back.
Oh, okay.
For my trailer.
On your, on the ODOT revolving.
No, 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 just belly dough. I'm buying two trailers. I'm buying one from ODOT and I'm buying.
And then one outright?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I'm paying it for it out.
I bet she could, you could.
Yeah, she got mine paid.
Do you want, are you wanting to get it ready right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Like eighty-three thousand? Does that sound right?
Eighty-three hundred. Oh, well, the total that I paid, I had to.
Hello, is Alex here?
Yeah, mine's gonna be twenty-three thousand, seven hundred.
Come in.
Because I had, mine's 24 years old.
I didn't tell her why to come in. I just said, come in.
Come in.
Then she has to wonder why she has to come in.
Guess I'm gonna start now.
We kept that trailer one day too long.
Max needs a favor. Or would like you to make a.
I got my paperwork. Cindy brought my paperwork from Adam Di for my trailer. I want to go ahead and make out a PO for it today, so I can pay for it.
Sure.
Here's the paperwork.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then if you'll give it to me, and I'll scan all of that in.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, my gosh. I couldn't read it from where I was sitting.
Seventeen thousand.
Oh, you saw the ASs.
Oh.
Yeah, it was eighty-three.
Oh.
Okay, that's what I was saying.
On the butterfly. Well, I bought them, they were from Dollar General. They were fifty cents. It's a good one. I just put it right there on my. Not that everyday it is.
Anymore without having school kids. That's what Brian's always saying. What day is this?
Totally restrict.
Cindy, I want to ask you about that payroll account. Can you get me the amount that I have in that 911 account that I told you I thought that that was full-time? Yes.
Okay, yes, yes.
I want to know how much is in that account.
Yeah, and I'll go back and actually pull the actual reports and show where everything happened, and then we'll, we'll get it switched around.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Sorry I didn't get that already.
No, that's okay. You're busy. I know you got, I seen where you was up here sending out agendas.
Well, here's what I do. I did it from home, and then I email it to myself, which comes to my phone, and then I email it on to you, and that way then I can type my, I figure, okay, I'm just typing minutes, which is public record anyway, so I have it on a external hard drive that I just plug in. I don't save it on my computer at home. I just put it on an external hard drive.
That's why I was thinking a laptop for you would just be.
Yeah, really.
Docking station would be probably.
Yeah, yeah, I really, I do need, but I just, I don't have any money, so I have to wait till next year, so. But, yeah, I really did, I'll budget it, try to, yeah, I need to budget in to get a laptop, because mine's really not that great, and I had Brandon work on it.
But Cindy, you're using that for the board of county commissioners, so that'll kind of come out county general.
I would think so, yeah.
Well, I mean, because I don't use it for anything other than that.
Good morning, everyone.
What do you think?
It is a good morning.
Things in the county running smooth? It's glass?
Silk. Lot better since it rained.
Well, I love living there. I know I'm in good hands.
More than got you, Phil, don't we?
Have a great day.
Yes, thank you. Now, he didn't come in far enough to get the last number. You know, it's like we're talking to the doorway.
Kelpro.
Yeah, did they?
Yep. He's, he's kind of sold on those right now. So, and that's.
I was talking, I went down to Kelpro, and I was very impressed with all the people and everything there. It's.
Well, he told me, because I'd asked him about if I were to get a new laptop, he said, well, I'd just, he said, if it were me, he said, I'd just get it from Kelpro, so, okay.
Well, if you guys have a blessing, I'll have him check into it, just because, well, mine, mine is my son's that we bought him when he went to college, and it's been stepped on, so every time you open it, it clunks, and then sometimes it, it makes it go off, you know? And so then you have to turn it back on, and it's just like.
I have to give mine a shot.
Boy in college.
He has to give his a shot of ether to get it to start.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the payment?
I'm move to approve.
Second.
Ronk motion has seconded to approve payment of purchase orders and travel claims as presented. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess. All ayes, motion carried unanimously. Do you want to call Alex and tell her how the pillows are ready to be picked up?
Hello, whenever she's done, then she can come pick up the pillows.
I make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Cindy's.
All right.
I make a motion to approve blanket purchase orders.
I second that.
Hess moved, Ronk seconded, to approve blanket purchase orders. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried unanimously. Uh, correction for transfer of funds, emergency service to E911 on full-time salaries, conversion error.
Okay, that's what we was talking about. When this showed up at the meeting the other night, I could remember us having full-time salaries in the signage. I knew we had M and O and capital outlay. And I told them guys, I said, I don't remember that, but now, after review, I know what that was. When the guys put the signs up in our districts, we, instead of paying them out of our districts, we paid them out of the 911 account. And that's why we have a full-time salary out of that. So, that is okay, and this total balance would be correct at that.
So, do we leave it alone?
Yeah.
Leave it alone?
Yeah, no action.
No action. Burn ban for Grant County, Resolution 201815B, revision.
Did, did Brandon print anything out for us today or?
Oh, I don't know. Let me ask him. Of course, they, they would be as of last Thursday.
Hi, did you print anything out on burn ban?
At least on Thursday. It would not be correct for today, because we've had rain.
Okay, all right, we're at that one right now, so if you'll come here in a second. Okay, thank you. He'll be here in just a minute. Here's the resolution if y'all want to. We'll get to it. Make sure that on the date at the bottom is the only change made.
We still got a tremendous fuel load, but my point is, is we got about a half inch of rain at Manchester, and I think that's pretty much general around.
Robin says she got an inch.
Jefferson.
We had an inch out at Arden Bay.
Jefferson had an inch and a half. We had an inch.
Cool, yeah.
And I think more than half an inch of it. We're still in the prediction for rain.
Yeah.
But that's to impose, not to extend, correct? Or is that?
Well, it's, well, it's, you're, you're not really extending. You're actually, you can only do them maximum of 14 days, and the expiry, we do them seven days. We did it 10 days, because we got off cycle a little bit. We got off cycle, but, um... While we're waiting for that, let's move on down to item F. Phone, fax quotes forbid O228 came for Rock calling for the REAP grant, District 2, in accordance with Title 61. We sent out, we sent out eight quotes for this on Monday, the 12th, either by fax, email, or called in person. They picked up. We received two back. We received one from B and B, all right, look at there, B and B Equipment, for the amount of $4.19 a loaded mile, and their bid is good till May 31st of 18, and I do have a copy of their liability insurance. The second one I received was from B and H Dozer, and the project price is good till done, and the price is $4.09.
Four dollars and what?
Four dollars and nine cents a loaded mile, and I do have a copy of their liability insurance. And so the only two out of the eight we heard back from, they were delivered to me this morning by my, Paul, my EA gave them to me today. So with that being said, I would make a motion to accept the one for $4.09 from B and H Dozer as the lowest and best bid.
I'll second that.
Bobbit motioned, Ronk seconded, to accept the bid from B and H. Um, Bobbit motioned, wrong seconded, to accept the bid from B and H Dozer for four oh-nine for the REAP grant for District Two until the job is finished. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes motion carried unanimously. Thank you for the bid. Appreciate that very much. And thanks for your records. Um, phone fax quote bid oh-three-twenty-eighteen for four and five.
I just had not taken that off.
Oh, yeah.
I, it, it just-
Is there?
Well, I guess I wondered. How's it, anybody heard how it's going?
Do we want an update on that?
I mean, I was in there. I don't know, I mean, it's-
Is it, that is, not finished?
No, it's not finished.
Yeah, yeah. We can duck our heads in later if wanted.
All righty, no action. Uh, Resolution fourteen dash twenty-eighteen, National County Government Month. As we all know, National County Government Month is always in April of each year. We've been doing that since nineteen ninety-one through the National Association of Counties. This year, the President's Initiative is serving the underserved, and with a special attention being paid to the, the children. Um, so we have a resolution here to, uh, move forward, uh, making sure people are aware of what counties do, so.
I make a motion to approve the Resolution fourteen dash twenty-eighteen.
I second that.
Hess moved, wrong seconded, to approve Resolution twenty-eight, twenty-eighteen dash fourteen, proclamation for National County Government Month. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes motion carried unanimously, and that probably needs to be published in the paper.
Okay.
Resolution oh-nine twenty-eighteen, disposing of equipment, District Three, Dozer Blades for Greater Purchase, one fourteen of twenty sixteen.
Well, okay. My only issue is, the Dozer Blades that are, that are being disposed, they, they were sold at the CED auction. They were not the ones that purchased in-
Oh, I have the wrong purchase date.
Two thousand sixteen. I think they were shop-built. I think.
Okay, why don't we, um, since it's listed improperly on the agenda, why don't we table that for, uh, no, don't table, we can't table.
Table. Okay.
We'll take no action, because it won't appear back as that item. We need to correct it.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So, no action, and just make the correction.
I apologize about that.
Oh, that's okay, that's okay.
So, we will send that back to you. Morning, Brandon.
Morning. Thank you, ma'am.
Hey, thanks.
Yep.
And this information was as of Thursday, March fif-
Yeah, it was, they only do it once a week.
Right, right. So, it's as Thursday, March fifteenth, uh, at eight o'clock, so, um, we don't really know, since we've had the rain, where we stand on that.
Not yet. We'll know till Thursday.
Well, I would make a resi- recommendation that we let the Burnham band expire today at four o'clock and re- revisit it next week.
Do we need to go, do we need a motion to go back up there, since we skipped it? Are we okay?
And, uh, I think we'll be okay, since we said we were moving down and we'd return.
Okay, okay. Okay, gotcha, okay.
So, okay, so Hess has made a motion to release it, uh, let it expire at four o'clock and revisit it next Monday. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
And wrong seconded. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Yes.
Hess.
Yes.
All eyes motion carried unanimously.
Now, what letter was that?
That was, uh-
I can't find it.
E.
Oh, there you are.
And be sure to put that back on the agenda from Monday.
Yeah, I wrote myself an update.
Okay. Resolution sixteen dash twenty-eighteen, disposing of equipment, Treasurers' Office for Desk. Um, Resolution seventeen twenty-eight, uh, a desk from the Treasurers' Office. Eighteen dash twenty-eighteen is a third desk. And Resolution nineteen twenty-eighteen is a fourth desk in the Treasurers', and twenty dash twenty-eighteen is a fifth desk in the Treasurers' Office. Um, she wants to dispose, means she's no longer using them. She's got her new ones in, right? They're not being used.
She doesn't have her new ones in. She has tables sitting in there, but they're no longer, those-
Those desks are gone.
Yeah, she just uses them.
And now, one of them, 'cause I, I had to take it over and clarify where they were going.
Yeah.
And she informed me that, uh, Resolution, um, the one that's on seventeen two oh-one A, she has not decided whether to get rid of that one, just, or that she hasn't.
We can't run that one through till she makes a decision what she's gonna do with it.
Okay.
Or, you know, that, that surplus. She's already surplus.
Right, she's already surplus.
So, she can't dispose it, 'cause she's not disposing of it.
Right, right, so she, so-
So, but the other ones, what's, how's she's disposing of the other ones?
Yeah, and I've got them all separated out.
Okay.
So, all of those should be there with these-
She's giving these all to the fairgrounds, to the D.A.'s office, to the D.A.'s office, and to the fairgrounds, so those-
And ones, some's to the assessor, B.A. and assessor.
D.A. and assessor. She's giving, how can she give one piece, one desk to a D.A. and an assessor?
A topper that went into the assessor's office.
So, they'll have to, uh, give those two separate I.D. numbers to show them going back to that one, because she's splitting them. So, we need to make sure that they have separate inventory numbers and that these invent, these do need to, we need to follow through that these show up on the inventory.
Right.
So, ask them to, to give you a new inventory update with those new assets on them.
Okay, now, do those new inventory need to come back to the board, or just make sure that I'm getting them?
No, she's, yeah, she's transferring them, taking off her inventory. She'll, she'll give you a new inventory. They, they should put them on their inventory. They'll have new numbers, because they have to follow their same number.
Right.
But they'll have to show that they've got them back, and they have to designate it back to her inventory number, so they can be tracked back. They go into their inventory valued at whatever her inventory value. They'll have to figure out how to split that one's value somehow.
Yeah, okay, okay.
So, do we have a motion? We would only motion to approve-
Sixteen, sixteen, nineteen, and twenty.
Eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, correct?
I so moved. I'll second that.
Wrong moved, has seconded to approve the Resolution sixteen, eighteen, twenty, nineteen, and twenty dash twenty-eighteen, and please, in there, make sure you include all the information of who, what, when, where, and why. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes motion carried unanimously. And no action on, uh, twenty, or twenty-eighteen seventeen. So, they don't have to sign these anymore?
They do on the surplus, but not on the disposing.
Okay, thank you.
Which seems odd to me.
Yeah. Why not?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that his shoes or a dog? I think it was his shoes, but it did sound like a dog yelping, didn't it?
He got his tail under the chair. Chris Long, a guy that used to work for South Central Telephone up there one time, he come out to do a locate for me when I worked for Alhoppa County, and he wrecked his pickup, and he was kinda boogered up and stuff, and said, "What in the world happened to you, Chris?" He's real jovial and stuff. He says, "Well," and he said, "I'll tell you guys what happened, but I ain't telling nobody else." He had two dogs and a piggy with him, and they got in a fight.
Oh!
And he said, "I was trying to separate him while I was driving down the road and wrecked the pig."
Item K, Resolution twenty-one twenty-eighteen, disposing of equipment, D two, for the twenty-one dash twenty-eighteen, twenty-two dash twenty-eighteen, and twenty-three dash twenty-eighteen, the three rock trailers that has been traded in on Monday. Um, I would make a motion to, uh, accept the resolutions twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three to dispose of.
I'll second it.
So, so, Bobbit moved, wrong seconded. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes motion carried unanimously.
I should've probably bought your useless. Oh, okay.
Okay, um, item twenty, uh, item L, Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-eighteen, dispose of District One, uh, Ranco Trailer purchased in nineteen ninety-four, traded in.
I so moved.
I'll second that.
Hess moved, wrong seconded, to approve the, the Resolution for disposing twenty-four dash twenty-eighteen. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Yes.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes motion carried unanimously.
And there's several, oh, I'm sorry, we're not on that one yet.
Okay.
Sorry, getting ahead of myself.
Item N, considering possible action on OEMS Federal Surplus Property Program Renewal Application for District Three, and acknowledge the District One date of renewal is January one of t- twenty twenty.
And I verified that with the O E M A, O E M S.
Okay, and so do we, um, so do we have the application for renewal for D three?
I've got it here.
And, and Max, there are a couple places you've needed to sign.
So, I just need to put people's names. Okay, you want me to just put people's names on here? Who can?
Yes.
Okay.
And mine's good till January one of twenty twenty.
January of twenty twenty, mhm, mhm.
Okay, I need to sign all these sheets.
Yes, mhm.
So, I, do I need to send my guys up here then to?
Do they have to sign?
Yes, there's a signature. I mean, which is fine, I can do it.
Why don't you take it?
You can take it and bring it back to me.
Oh, you'll need to take it.
We're gonna get a sign from that, too.
All right.
Yeah.
Is it, are all three of us supposed to sign anywhere?
No. I think just you.
Okay, well, how about I move, I move that I sign the, uh, Federal Surplus Property Program Renewal Application for District Three.
And acknowledge, do you wanna acknowledge also that-
And I will acknowledge that I'm going to have Dean White and Dean Hall as representatives as well.
And then acknowledge that District One's renewal date is January one, twenty twenty.
Yeah, exactly.
That's, that's where I was headed.
I will second that.
So, wrong moved, has seconded to, uh, uh, to sign the OEMS Federal Surplus Property Program Renewal Application for D three, and to acknowledge D one's renewal date will be January one, twenty, is good till twenty twenty. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes motion carried unanimously.
You know, and on the next one, I didn't get with Jim, or Hembry Construction didn't provide me with the new, well, I'll let you, and then I'll talk about, I'm sorry.
But when did that email?
The new, the new, to, the new bid thing?
Yeah.
Notice, I don't know. I, I, I apologize.
But, uh, let me look real quick here. I was thinking that one that you forwarded me.
Oh, did it, maybe.
We have to let me look one.
Well, I guess it'd be the same, just different dates.
Yeah, that's what it was. You emailed him back.
What the deal was, was the Hembry Construction went out, uh, put the publications for the Lamont Fire Department in the Ponca City and the Enid Paper, but they didn't put it in the Medford Paper, which is our, uh, approved publication, so it has to go back out for publication at the expense of Hembry Construction, because it wasn't our error.
Cindy, I'll, I'll just take the whole thing with me.
Okay.
Yeah, you sent him back, whoops, whoops, whoops. You sent, yeah, you sent an email back to Paul and said, "Should the document be dated as Monday, March nineteenth rather than the sixteenth? As the nineteenth will be when we actually sign it to allow them to publish it."
Oh, that's, that's on the, that's on the courthouse one.
That's on the courthouse one.
Yeah. I don't think Hembry ever got back with me. Thank you.
Okay. That would've been with Jim Aldrich, right?
Jim Hammer.
Jim McKee is the architect.
Jim McKee, and you've been, but you've been talking to Jim, too many Jims.
But I've been talking to Jim Aldrich, yes.
Okay.
Yes, too many Jims.
It's kinda like Cindy and Cindy.
In here, I'm Cindy Sue. I go by my middle name.
And Robin and Robin.
Yeah, Robin and Robin.
Yeah, um, well, is that going to mess up their bid date? Maybe we better call Jim Aldrich or Jim-
Yeah, it's pretty bad. I have his number on here, just because he is.
Yeah.
I think, let's see, I think I do. I don't know. Let's see. Because the construction company's supposed to prepare that, which they did the first one.
It would be the same one. It's just that date needed changes, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, I guess, I mean, I could go pull it up.
We, we could approve to do that, um-
Hello? Hi, it's Cindy Pratt. I'm, I'm in the board meeting. Um, did Hembry ever send a new, uh, notice on that bid with the new dates? Or do I just need to go in and try to?
I got it at seven o'clock this morning.
Okay.
He said it shows that they were saying earlier, but they didn't come off the facts until-
Oh, it'll probably be next week?
I can't read that.
Oh, okay, okay, so you wanna hold off till next week?
Well, um, can you-
Oh, he's out this week, okay, all right. I'll relay that to the board.
When they were received, I-
Thank you, but like-
Came from over there, so.
He's like horse.
Yeah, can you tell me when they were, uh, it's, it, they're, they're higher, they're higher, but-
I said, I have so many.
The, the, the bid is to be faxed to my office, not here.
But, but, like, when Ronnie died, I downloaded all of his phone numbers into my phone, because I thought, I'm gonna need to get ahold of these people someday, you know?
Yeah, that's, that's a very, I mean, you can't, I mean, read the copy.
My phone had to be, um, updated or something. I don't know. I hate phones. And, uh, so all my numbers left, all my pictures. But then Richard saved them, but all I have is Ryan's numbers, once she had them, and I'm slowly putting a few in, but, um, not very fast. Uh, Jim stated they're not ready, I guess, to go back out. They're making some changes, so he said it'll probably be next week.
Okay, good. Okay, that's great. So, we will just, no action, and waiting on, on that.
Was that on the Hembry, or was that on the courthouse? That's on, uh, the Lamont Fire Department.
Yeah, Lamont Fire Department.
Yeah.
So, we'll not do anything?
No, because, uh, they're, they're changing their bid. They're tweaking something on it.
Doing something different, yeah.
Just tweaking something on it.
Okay.
So, no action. Um, considering possible action on ta- bid tabulation by construction manager, Kyle Construction, for bid oh-one twenty-eighteen, courthouse and sheriff's office renovation, ten a.m., Kyle Construction and Ambler Architects. So, they're supposed to be here at ten o'clock, right?
Yeah.
So, we have a little bit of time, so let's go on down through the list, wait on them, and we will return at ten o'clock. Item P is discussion of O.P.E.H.W. Health Plan, which Cindy Pratt and I attended that meeting, and as usual, we get the information at the meeting, instead of prior to the meeting.
Yeah, and that was a lot of information for you to try to absorb.
Yeah, we were, we didn't get out till Lamont one fifteen that day. Yeah, one, one fifteen. Um, the, the good news, if, if there is good news, is for the health, uh, increase, the insurance increase for the county portion is only going to take a two and a half percent increase, which is phenomenal, considering most places are going up anywhere from eleven to eighteen percent. However, the bad news is that we are going to shove it off on our employees for their families. We are going to increase the, the, the children are not gonna be bad. The increase on the children is going to take a two and a half percent increase, but your spouse is going to take a twelve point nine, was it twelve point nine or twelve point one?
The children is two and a half?
Two and a half. Let's see. Yeah, okay, yeah. Employee, two and a half percent, uh, children will be two and a half percent. Spouse is gonna be twelve point one. Um, they've changed the, if you had a spouse and child, or spouse and children, it was gonna go up like twenty-nine to twenty-three, but they're going to re-blend those, and they will not go up that much on, on that. But, so, we, 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 we're gonna absorb that and just blend it, so that child still goes up two and a half, and spouse twelve point one. Um, within that, it, how that actually is, in, in some cases, that's an overall combined increase, but what it actually means is that if you just have the medical and the prescription, it's gonna be a four point five, because we're gonna decrease our dental thirty-nine point five percent. We're decreasing that dental, 'cause we're not, the dental isn't really being used, so, but that makes a compromise. So, like, if you didn't take dental, you would go up four point five percent on your child, but if you have dental, it averages two point nine. And the same thing, if you have a spouse that's just on the dental, uh, it would reduce it thirty-three percent, and if they're on the prescription and the health, it's fifteen point four. It's just what they're talking about is that combined, so we won't really know till we get a. Also, enrollment will start earlier. It will start April first. You will have sixty days, but you have to do it online. Every employee. We no longer are gonna fill out forms and hand them in to, to Cindy to do. We have to do it ourselves. And that means you're probably gonna have to write your- We have to do it ourselves, and that means you're probably gonna have to ride your employees to get them to do it. I, I, I'm assuming they're gonna send you a list that you'll know who's signed up and who hasn't?
Yeah, I'm sure they, we, yeah, if not, I will request that, yeah, yeah.
That would be good, so, we're going to do that. Um, what you really need to be thinking about, we did not add a health savings plan for this year, we're still in working on that, because I don't know if you're aware, they introduced legislation at Oklahoma, I did not look and see if it went through, they were gonna make it where Oklahoma could no longer do health savings plans, I do not know why.
That is.
I do not know why, I don't think that probably got heard down there. But the other thing they're looking at, right now, all of our, our benefits have cha- exactly the same, we didn't raise our deductible, we didn't raise our co-pays on, on medical or anything, you know, I wanna reiterate, we're at two point one million red right now, loss, uh, and, um, as you know, we were overbilled by through Dearborn on our, on our life insurance, so we're going to enter into probably a lawsuit on that. And that's like a one point eight million dollar deal there, so, we're trying to work through that. Next year, it's very likel- likely that we will change our deductible and go up on that, but not to the extent of any five thousand or ten thousand dollar deal, and we probably are going to look at, um, our co-pays for prescriptions, especially being increased slightly, not dramatically. We are continuing to add some, uh, some, some of these newer drugs that are just still not, not solid, and if there's other drugs out there that work, some drugs we are still not approving, you know, if there's enough, well, I can't remember, one, one pill is, it's a, a one thousand milligram, and if you take that one, it, it costs like a thousand dollars a month. But if you would take two five hundred milligrams, which gives you the one thousand milligram that you require, it's about half price, so we're not gonna fill prescriptions for the one thousand, you can still get the drug, but you're gonna take two pills instead of one.
Right.
So, you know, some of this, this silly stuff that's out there that they're, they're watching, so, but right now, um, and be aware, last year was the first time, and we did it twice mid-year, we did make adjustments to our plan, and that is very likely possible, so, what we have today is what we have today, what we have next month, we're not sure.
But if I may add, I wanna say that you really go to bat for, from what I'm seeing, she's really the spokesperson saying, this whole thing was started to try to make it affordable for, so I just wanna say, we appreciate that you're down there going to bat for us.
I think they get tired of me saying that, I always tell them.
Too bad, but it's true, yeah.
The plan, you know, I tried to get them to do it, uh, uh, it would cost the county a little more, but it would've saved our families a little bit, by saying, let's keep it affordable for everyone, you know, I hate pushing that up, what I don't wanna see is that our employees drop their spouses or drop their children because they can't afford it.
Exactly, that's, that's.
They work for us for a lower wage because we can provide better benefits for them, and that we need to not lose sight of what we're doing.
And, and that's the only way that, looks to me like a, a higher deductible would work, is if, if you could put an HSA together to go with it hand in hand, and then it's cafeteria plan.
Right.
Under the, the laws right now, correct?
Right, right, current, yes, that's absolutely right, so.
So, yeah, thank you.
Yes, so we're, we're, we're working on it, but I really appreciate Cindy coming down and doing that, so we have.
It's very important, it was, it was a full round.
So, alrighty, um, item Q, National Joint Powers Alliance Program. While I was at our C E D meeting, sitting there with a couple commissioners, other counties use this National Joint Powers Alliance, it's kinda like the US Communities, only.
Something for you.
Only, it's for, um, instead of it being for office supplies and stuff like that, it's for tractors and mowers and graders and.
Let's run those up at the top.
Three sixteen, okay, we're gonna have to, thank you very much. Um, so I asked Cindy to check into it, there's no cause to join it. Um, Garfield County is buying their mower tractors and tractors off of it because they were cheaper than the state bid, and as long as you work through, uh, an approved, uh, provider in the state, which I think Team K and I think most of them are, but they can ta- go off this bid rather than the state bid, when we say we're gonna accept something off the state bid, then we're accepting whatever the price is on the state bid, now we can have the option, if we join this, to say that we're going to accept, and these are all national bids, just like the state bid, only they're national, they're not just in Oklahoma, they're nationwide, and, um, I just think it's another option to help, uh, the county save some money, it gives us another place to check prices. And there's no cost to join.
And if you go out to that website, there's a lot of information, there's a lot of ques- I was gonna print some more out, but I thought, well, I didn't know how much information you wanted printed out, but.
So evidently you go on that website and apply for membership, and then it says your, your number ID will arrive via email.
Mm-hmm. It's just another place to allow us to check prices, doesn't mean we have to use them, just like we don't have to use the state bid, we can still, you know, follow our, our state purchasing procedures.
Yeah.
But you'll look at the second page and, you know, Kenworth, Peterbilt, Staples is on there, I mean.
I don't have that page.
Can you read this page?
Nope.
Oh, that's where my spare was, okay, can I get, I'll get, I had a spare one of those, and I thought, I couldn't figure out where it was. Sorry about that.
He can't read anymore. I'm into Braille, so.
I don't see Mac on there.
Nope, I don't either, see Peterbilt.
Yeah, see Peterbilt.
Peterbilt and Kenworth or Pacar, they're the same one.
Yeah, Case IH is on there.
Volvo.
Yeah, John Deere.
Caterpillar.
Where's Cat?
Caterpillar's the third line.
Oh, yep, sure is, John Deere's on there.
John Deere's on there, Goodyear.
Ditwitt is too.
Ditwitt, yeah.
Then Scott Sterling gets some stuff from US Foods.
Uh, he, uh, uh, no, what is it, it's, uh, US.
Commodities, oh, yeah, yeah.
I think so, but, you know, here's a place to, to, to look, I mean, it just gives us another option, yeah, there's US Foods on there, but Xerox, Yamaha, Volvo.
Land Prey.
Verizon. Pitney Bowes, Polaris, Napa, Napa, I wonder if Napa would, uh, if you go in there for filters and things like that?
Could be, yeah.
Work on something.
New Holland.
But I, but I think it also allows you to work with your vendors that will accept those prices, so.
Yeah.
So, do you guys wanna be interested in joining for free?
Well, yeah, of course, if it doesn't cost you money, we, or to ourselves to do it.
I think so too, do you, you wanna make a motion on that?
I'll just make that as a motion, as a.
I'll second that motion.
Moved has seconded to, uh, join National Joint Powers Alliance with, uh, free membership to add as another, uh, possibility for vendors for bidding, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes motion carried unanimously, so Cindy Sue, if you will do that online, and then any paperwork that we need to sign, you can bring it to us, so. Uh, road crossing permits.
That's that one I didn't know.
Oh, this is mine, right? Yeah, I have not looked at that yet, so I'll, I'll just wait on that, no action on that. Um, at this time, I would like to return to item F, phone and quote, evidently our fax machine here in the office has not been working, and this morning some faxes came through. I have two more, uh, bids that were received timely, three sixteen eighteen, one at nine twenty-three AM, and one at eight twenty-seven AM, both of them on the sixteenth, which was Friday, I believe.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
So, I, I would note these, it does not change it, but we will note those as being received this morning after we accepted the bids. The other bids was, I have one from Deemer Construction on the Rock Hauling for five dollars, good till September nineteenth of twenty eighteen, and one from Dale's Construction, um, uh, good till May thirty-first for five dollars, and so, we've already accepted a bid which was lower, but please add, I need a copy from my records as well. Uh, but I will double check, those are, the, the bid request is for those to be faxed to, or sent to my office, so I will follow up with them to make sure that we don't have a blip in the future on that. Uh, brings us down to, uh, new business, do we have any new business, Cindy Sue?
No.
Uh, Max?
I, uh, have a deal where I went over and talked to the Alphafa County Commissioner, can this follow into this?
Um, uh.
New business.
Is it, do we, is it just FYI new business?
Well, it's gonna be a, and I think I'm gonna put it on there to have a resolution next week to sign.
You can bring us up to date what you're doing, but we'll put it as an agenda item next week.
Okay, uh, I've been talking to, um, Jay Hague, Alphafa County Commissioner over there about my, uh, he has a C I R B project in Alphafa County that comes from Byron East to the Alphafa-Grant County line, and then my C I R B project, which we have not signed off on yet, starts at the Grant County line and goes over to Highway one thirty-two, and that's four miles in my area and ten or eleven in, in Jay's area. And we've been having a lot of truck traffic, uh, when they start moving grain and stuff, and so I've been visiting with him about how we could limit that, and we was at first gonna put a tonnage on it, but a tonnage would limit everybody. Uh, county trucks or whatever, you know, and might be more harder during force and stuff, so, uh, we went back and, and in Harper County, Kansas, they have signs put up on their, their county blacktops that have, uh, no through commercial traffic, or through commercial traffic prohibited, and here's a copy of the sign, like, they have in their, uh, their county, okay? It has, uh, through commercial traffic prohibited, uh, except county origin or destination, which allows, uh, uh, an oil company to pick up a load of oil, or a, a farmer to have a load of, of something originating in the county, yeah, in the county and, and doesn't, doesn't affect them at all. Uh, it places a five hundred dollar fine for the maximum fine, and it says, uh, at the bottom of the sign, by order of the county commission resolution numbers named, which we kinda thought that that would be a good example for us to follow. Yeah, that being said, you have to go through the procedure of, uh, us passing a resolution through our board, and that's what I was wanting to bring to the board next week, whenever you do that, then you have to notify, uh, I think it's Troop S.
Yes, that's overweight.
Yes, rates and measures, uh, down in Oklahoma City, that you have passed that resolution, and it says, uh, pass the resolution, file the resolution with the clerk, and submit a copy to the public safety, which is Troop S. Uh, and then after notifying the public safety Troop S, then you can post your signs, and so that's what I wanna do.
That might not be a bad idea to do on all the county blacktops, to be honest with you.
Well, it would sure help, uh, probably even help, and I don't know how that would affect, uh, oil traffic, which we had a boom, went through it, where we all had, I've got pictures in north on Eminem Road up there, which the bridge has been replaced now, but I've got a picture of a, a oil dirt going across the three-ton bridge, you know, so.
Yeah, the, the problem is, when they get their move permits, they permit them on state highways, and the permits are supposed to say then, once they leave the state highway to get in contact with your county commissioner, I've had two in my fourteen years calling.
I was gonna say, it never happens, they never, never contact you, uh, just like that, that, that structure vessel that comes through Palm Creek, that time.
Yeah.
My God, that thing had eighteen axles or something under it, it was weighing over a million pounds, I think, it was ridiculous.
Okay, okay, and that's, I think, I think that'd be good to put on, uh, uh, as an agenda item for this week.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner comments, uh, Max, please.
Um, thankful for the rain, we got anywhere from a half inch in my area to an inch, maybe an inch and a quarter. Uh, we're, we love it, it's wonderful, uh. Really, we've been building up some roads and we're getting ready to start, uh, rocking, but we've kinda been waiting for a little rain to settle the road, because we all know that if a road base isn't settled, packed, it will do no good to put rock or shale on top of it, so we've been waiting for that, um, that's about all I have.
Pat, what do you got?
Uh, also thankful for the rain, um, we got the first mile north of Highway sixty on Eminem Road ground last week, and got about three-fourths of it shaled, and, well, I can't imagine we'd get a whole lot done this week, um, with the rain, but it is what it is. Um, I want to say thank you to Little Beast Construction and Kevin and Tanner Bushnell. They rented a sheep's foot for Grant County views for this project. I thought that was outstanding, that, that's, that's a big deal. Um, so we've got that, I, I rented, using Max's sheep's foot also, and then I rented another one, so, uh, we oughta be able to, once we can get going again, we're, we're gonna try to make this as painless as possible. Um, like to say congratulations to Cindy Bobbit for helping me out here, the first one is, uh, you are, you were chosen as one of twenty-five women in government, outstanding women.
Outstanding women in government.
In government.
Across the United States.
And also has been chosen by Women in Transportation as their first woman of the year for Oklahoma, so congratulations to you.
Thank you very much.
Very well deserved, very well deserved.
Appreciate that. I was honored and surprised.
Yes, uh, all that being said, I will be out of pocket tomorrow through Friday. I'll be out of town, I'll be on my phone if anybody needs me, but I'll be with, with family.
Stay safe.
Hope so.
Stay safe.
That's all I got.
All right, well, um, this week will be our ACO meetings, we'll start out at, uh, our ACO breakfast down at, uh, there for our legislators at seven thirty, then we'll have a legislative meeting at nine, followed by our, uh, SIGCF, our C E D meeting, state one that Max is on, and our ACO board meeting, so, following up at the Capitol. I've spent time last week at the Capitol, working, um, following along, we're moving forward, the Senate Bill thirteen sixty-five, uh, passed through the Senate without, with the title off, but it will move over to the, the House floor now. Um, the one that, on the dispersing funds for our served money, passed out of both, they both have bills, so they both passed out of both he- houses, and they'll swap now, so hopefully, that would be a big plus. If we can get our served money put into this dispersing fund, it'll take it out of our, uh, which it should be, it's how it used to be, and for some reason, Oklahoma changed the accounting procedure about eight years ago. So now, once that, that contract is awarded, the money comes out and puts in this dispersing account, so it doesn't look like that it's not spent, because in reality, once you sign a contract, the money is spent. But they, the legislators, why they've taken the hundred and eighty million out of county funds is because it's always sitting in that fund, and they think that it's never spent. But it is, right now, we're upside down, um, our C E D, uh, for our Region Four is five million in the hole, and Region Six is almost two million in the hole.
I just don't understand how there couldn't have been a lawsuit on that.
I don't know why ACO didn't.
I mean, 'cause that's, that's about as illegal, sounds to me, as, as they come.
Yeah, it is.
If you, like, 'cause you're right, once you sign that contract, that money's gotta be.
It's awarded, and, and they haven't paid it till the job is finished.
Right.
And now we're upside down, so.
And we've got other legis- uh, other commissioners out there that are pushing that thirty-four, thirty-eight bill, and their district that they represent is the ones that have all the accumulated money.
You're right.
That the legislators see, our district is, like you said, in the minus, and theirs is a positive twenty, twenty-four million, so it looks like we've got money there when we don't.
That came out, that came out of the House Bill thirty-four, thirty-eight, it came out of the House late Thursday. I talked to John Piper about it, I thought John Piper, they added amendment to it, that, that the money would go back to the CEDs based on population, they wanna take the pot and re-divide it. And I thought I had John Piper, but the title was take, was strictly.
That in a nutshell.
But John voted for it.
Yes, he did.
Well, he's got.
Yeah, and I've talked to him.
He's got part of the metro area with Guthrie.
With Guthrie, you're right, but anyway, it, it passed, the title's got to be restored, it'll go to the Hou- it'll go to the Senate side, and then the Senate will have to decide what they're gonna do, but it'll have to come back to the House and have the title restored before it can ever come out as a bill. I, I think we've gotta do due diligence, as long as we're working on our dispersment bill, that's where we need to be.
Yeah.
That's where we've got to be, so as long as we can get that one, we don't need this one. Moving it back to our CEDs, that we thought was a good idea, but we can't use our federal funds, because that, federal funds have to be matched through ODOT. And if it comes to the CEDs, we cannot use our federal funds through ODOT.
We're just gonna lose.
Could it be put in trust, that one, could it be?
We talked about a trust, a trust would be the best possible way, but they will never allow us to have a trust. They will never allow us to have a trust, they won't even allow ODOT to have a trust, that would be the.
Let's join the term fight authority.
Yeah, let's do it, you're right, you're right. So, anyway, we've got that, that going on, um, so it's gonna be another busy, busy week. Uh, of course, all the bills that were not heard are, are dead, you know, laid over, uh, so now they're switching sides. Uh, we're basically halfway through the legislative session, and so we'll see where we go from there, so, um, that's about all I've got, yeah.
Thanks for that, bit of great man.
So, at this time, yeah, did you guys cover the road crossing permits?
We have none to, oh, okay, okay, sorry, I didn't catch that, so, okay.
You'll be seeing.
Yeah, I was gonna go, see if there's.
Yeah, and he's not gonna need a call.
I'm making one.
Uh, Ryan, Ryan McIntosh or Paul. Or, oh, they are here.
Snuck in on us, didn't they?
They were just out there covering.
Getting rid of a little bit of, uh, what, what number is that?
There they are.
Yeah.
Would you gentlemen sign in, please?
Oh, yeah, I have two that I've not checked off. Hi, how are you today?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Good.
I bet she's had her rabies shots.
Well, I have, you can come sit down here. Hello, how are you today?
Good morning.
Good morning, it's a wonderful morning.
Yeah.
Glad you're right, huh?
Yeah, exactly.
Did you get to drive through any puddles?
You what?
Did you get to drive through any puddles on your way out?
Yeah, it was not, I mean, the wheat, the wheat looks good, but, we, we come out and went to Alba last week, the week before, and then went to, um, Fairview. And the wheat looked better than I thought it was.
Yeah.
I was really, really surprised, must be out around the Panhandle or someplace. But we've been dry, it's, it's been dry all over.
We're gonna return to item O, consideration and possible action on the table tabulations by construction manager, Tyler Construction, for bid O-one, twenty-eighteen courthouse and sheriff's office renovation, so you have the floor.
Okay, uh, I, I've sent out, this is our recommendation on the bids that we received and the, and the, uh, process to move forward, so let's get this in front of everybody.
I'm gonna save that one, okay.
Okay, you got it?
Yeah.
All right.
And, uh, always happy with the bid process, always disappointed when we don't get bids. But let me just kind of lead you through this, uh, with, with kind of color coded. But, uh, the items listed on the top part of this is bids that we've received, we've logged in, uh, you know, and we're in good shape on all of these numbers, according to our budget. What we did not get a good, a bid on is the storefront, and there was two or three reasons for that, that we'll go over in a little bit. But we recommend to approve all of these subcontracts, because by the time I re-advertise to bid the windows, these people don't have to stand behind their bid, there's some of these people that's, that's pretty low, and we've talked to every one of them, and they're good with their number, want to do the job, I don't have any issue, uh, with the electrician, Waldorf Riley, uh, we've done several projects with them, they're out of Arc City, and, uh, you know, uh, so, uh, Earthworks, Sober Brothers, Gypsum Board, Southwest Drywall, we've done several projects. Let me start over at the top, the miscellaneous work package is us. And it's just a hodgepodge of taking care of window seals, the attic stuff, hanging doors, everything that you don't wanna put in a bidder's package, because they don't wanna bid it, is kind of, we usually end up having a miscellaneous, what we call miscellaneous partner package. Uh, and, uh, concrete is us, did not get another bid on that, uh, but it's really not very attractive concrete work, it's kind of a tough little job, and, and usually I end up with those. Masonry, what we did on masonry was we had a quote from them for people for a month with equipment to tuck point the building, and then they'd given us a quote on infilling these doors on a hard dollar bid, okay?
Okay.
I've given them two months to re-tuck point and seal the building, and then put their, their money down below here on, uh, the thirty-six hundred dollars to infill the doors. So, uh, we may not spend all of that money, uh, I don't know that, but I feel very confident.
Thirty-six hundred on the doors?
The thirty-six hundred, uh, what was the, uh? Well, you know, I don't see.
Is that included in the fifty-two, one ninety-eight?
The fifty-two, that is correct.
Okay, so it's included, okay, got you, okay, including, okay, plus.
Twenty-four.
Oh, okay.
Plus, plus, the, plus the thirty-six.
Yeah.
Is, is included.
Okay, uh, and then the next item is, uh, structural steel materials. Vision Fabricators is a local fabricator down in Park City. Again, this is just handrails and the fire escape and, you know, miscellaneous. I'm putting that up and installing it, and, uh, roofing, we had good roofing numbers on, on the, uh, you know, that was a big ticket item. And, uh, we've, uh, we've got one bid here at one sixty-six-seven, and another one at a hundred and seventy-nine-six. We've talked to the low bidder, we've worked with them before, uh, they're a good company, I don't have any issue with them. Uh, we asked them about the TPO roof, they scrubbed that out, they don't do it, they do the metal roofs, but they've got that all-inclusive in their bid, and, and, and Ryan's called and talked to most of these people, and what we call vetting a sub, we give them a call, we talk to them about their bids, they already know what everybody else's bid is, and make sure that they're, uh, they're good with their numbers, and they are, you know, so I, I don't have any. And there's no, these peo- none of these people I haven't had experience with. If it's someone I don't have experience with, I get a little bit more nervous about them, but, uh, but, uh, these are all people. Industrial Materials on the, uh, steel doors and frames, and the wood doors and the hardware at Enid, uh, you know, like, we've done a lot of work with them, and, uh, Southwest Drywall is out of Tulsa, in Oklahoma City, and there, we've done a lot of projects with them, don't have any issue with them, so, uh, their number was a little bit higher than what I had in my original estimate, but we got other numbers this time, and that's normal, I mean, in, in, in my budgeting process. Uh, the, uh, the sunroom is an alternate, and, uh, we, we, since we did not get a glass bid, there's a lot of glass and doors in that, in the base bid, so I can't make a fair assumption of it yet until I get a, until I get a glass number on it, you know, so, uh.
Well, we talked about, you know, not just a glass, we kinda talked about doing more, something more structural, you know.
In the base bid, that's what I'm saying, the, the, the drywall guy has the framing of it, that metal studs.
Okay.
The roofer's got the roofing and the sidewalls, but I didn't get the glass bid, so I can't make a comparison.
Can't do apples to apples.
Yeah, I can't compare apples to apples, so, the base bid is a more of a structural.
Yeah, that's what we think, we, we prefer, yeah, we don't want what we've got, it's not working.
So I don't have that all wrapped up yet until I get that glass price.
Okay.
You know, uh, like I say, Waldorf Riley on, on the, uh, H V A C, good company, do good work, they get one or two jobs like this a year, and that's all they do, but they do a real good job of what they do, so, uh, uh, younger homes, we use them on probably fifty percent of jobs in Park City, so I don't have any issue, we talk to them. Uh, Sober Brothers, real good company, uh, out of Park City. Uh, I had about twenty-eight thousand in there to do that, so there are a little bit more, but our, uh, heat and air's under, our electrical's under, so we're, we're in good shape on the budget. The only thing I'm nervous about is getting the window bidding in, and, um, want you to, um, the glazing people, we talked to three of them, said, why'd you not bid it? It's not clear on, wh- what, what is an operable window, what is not an operable window. It's, uh, we, we, we need a little better spec and a little better definition, and they all felt like that they would bid it. Who, who's wanting operable windows?
Well, I am, and I will tell you why.
Okay.
Um, uh, first of all is safety, especially on our second floor, uh, ways to get out for fire. Second of all, we have, uh, everybody, we have a thirty-minute lunch break, everybody brings all their food in here and cooks, and I can tell you, I've been in this courthouse so many times with burnt popcorn, and you can't open a window to vent it.
Okay.
Um, and I, and I get the idea that for, uh, air conditioning and stuff, you don't want your windows open, but if we was in this room and there was a fire there, you know, we'd like the option to be able to jump out our window.
Okay.
Um.
And.
That, that's me, I'm, I'm one of three.
Well, well, no, and, and I'm not, I'm, I'm not here to make up your mind for you.
Right.
I'm just here, it creates us a little bit more of a dilemma when we put in operable windows, and, and I'm thinking, you know, screens, the process we have to go through, the verification on the dimensions, they have to be fabricated in a factory where a glazing guy can take a fixed window, frame it, order the glass, measure this, and he can do the same thing with the operable window, but you need to understand, when he orders that operable window from a manufacturer, if he misses that a half inch, he eats that. So, uh, i- it can drive his price, is what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to say here. But now, and on the, on the, are, are we upgrading all the fresh air system to where you won't have the odors in the building that you have, the new, new regulation says you gotta have how much fresh?
I can't tell you.
It's fifteen or twenty percent fresh air, well, you didn't have that six years ago, or, in, in the new bulk of code, so you're gonna be inducing fresh air in here that you don't have, for the odor part of it.
Okay, but if you, okay, for example, let's go up on our second floor in our court clerk's office, you know, that has that little balcony out there, you know, one of those windows was gonna be made to completely open.
It's gonna be a door, right.
It's gonna be a door in the window frame.
Yes, ma'am.
Right, so, that we know of is gonna be operable, but, okay, you're talking about screens, I'm looking at these, these are supposed to be operable, they don't open, but they don't have screens on them.
Wh- why?
I'm sure at one time they did.
You think they did? I don't think they ever did.
Yeah.
Usually an operable window has a screen, uh.
Okay.
That's general.
I will tell you, my home, of course, I have a pillow, and it's, it's a residential, but in my home, my screens are pulled down, they're, they're, they're in the frame, and you pull them down and lock them to the frame, so you don't have a screen there all the time, I don't look through the screen, only when I pull it down, and then I can open my window, is that available in a commercial?
Very, very expensive.
Very, very expensive.
And, and that's what I'm, I, I mean, I, I'm here to do whatever you want me to do, and, and, uh, you know, and I want you to get the end product that you want.
Well, what if you put all sealed windows, like, on the first floor, but put operable on your second, I mean, fire, fire safety, I mean, I guess if it's really a fire, you throw a brick through it and jump out, but then you've got glass to, you know. To, yeah, yeah.
You, you could make some of the windows a fire escape.
Can, can you make one in each room a fire escape?
Or, or you can make three on each floor and designate, you know, you have safety issues that you gotta meet, but, uh, but, uh, you know, if I jump out the second floor, it's probably gonna kill me anyway when I land, but no. But I understand the fire department gets here and, and gets people out of the building, and I, there's no fire escape on this building.
Right, and we don't, and we don't really wanna add one on our building.
Okay, I understand that.
I mean, that, like, right now, they've got ropes they throw out the window, and, you know, those types of things. And it's make it very difficult for the people on, in the court clerk's office, because when they throw theirs out the window, they have to throw it out far enough to get over the ledge and then get out, so that's why we wanted, definitely wanted that door there, but.
And we do that school, we, we put windows that are actually made to be fire escapes.
Well.
And we could do, say, four or five, on second floor, you're more concerned about the second.
Second, third, 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 yeah, second and third, you know.
That needs to be defined, and, and, and what I'm here, I'm re-advertising the windows for bid on Wednesday.
Okay.
Uh, because I wanna get that on the contract, so someone needs to sit down and say, we agree with this, so that I can get a basis of design and put it in an addendum for the people to bid. And, 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 and I, uh, you're probably gonna drive the window budget a, a little higher, uh, because when we did East Middle School, they had fire escapes, there was none of those, every one of those fixed windows.
Every single one was fixed.
Yeah, and it was a, it, it was a big, big window job before that. Now, this, this was a school.
Oh, it was a school.
It was a three-story school.
I wouldn't mind having a one window, two or three windows per floor.
I, I think a couple would be fair.
Yeah, I would, yeah.
Either operable or, they make them that's actually just for fire escapes.
That would be fine.
I do too.
One on the north, and one on the south, or one on the east and one on the west, that?
Yeah, something, the, the larger, you know, the, we've, on the third floor, we have the DHS, so you could put one in there, and then we have the, um, extension, and they're all in there together, so maybe.
Maybe just one.
One in the extensions room, and maybe one in the DA, oh, excuse me, not DHS isn't on third floor, they're on second, who's on the, who's on?
Yeah, DHS is third.
Yeah, it's third, yeah, okay, it's third, yeah, right, so maybe one in there.
The DA and then the courtroom.
And then maybe three on the, three on the second, one in the courtroom, one.
Dean is gonna have one already, so maybe one, uh, in the DA's office, and then in the courtroom, and then that one, obviously, for the court clerk's office. Figure out which window, and then here, um.
Here, where you got two doors?
Yeah.
It's probably not.
I, 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 I'm, I'm trying, we could run fast enough, and I'm not, I'm, I'm kind of. But I think it's like a hundred and forty foot to the door, or, or eighty to a hundred and forty foot, and you don't have that issue.
So, so that's.
The, the area will probably be okay.
No, it's not a code issue.
It's not a code issue.
That, that would.
Yeah, we, that's, we kinda think maybe put two on each, on the second floor, and two on the third, plus the one for the court clerk's office, that one, we already know, that's gonna be a regular door.
The door thing.
The door thing, but then two fire escape windows on the second floor, and two fire escape windows on the third floor.
You can designate those with signage.
Yeah, right, yeah, right, like, right.
And, and then, if y'all do like we do, or, or, you know, we do safety, some, some training, so that everybody works there. A new employee comes in, you go over that with them, they do.
Well, and we have to have a fire route, we have to have a fire escape route posted, that's required by OSHA.
So you'd have to rework that.
Right, so, well, I think I'd feel better doing that.
And then nothing here on the first floor.
Yeah, I think we'd be okay.
You're, you're well within your door range.
We're just on our own, we're just on our own.
We can run fast enough, can't we, Cindy?
You darn right, I could, yeah, yeah.
You're so high, she might run you down, that's right.
Are you good, and, 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 so we can get that?
Do you think that'll help you out on your bids?
Yeah, and, and then we need to.
We, we gotta tighten down our spec a little bit.
Oh, really?
Does that give it to you?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we know what they need, based upon the comments we got, they got back from their window supplier. So, we'll rewrite it, give it to them before Wednesday, so they can go out for the bids.
Make sure you include, when you go out for bids, that vendor out of Fairview, 'cause he's came and looked at our windows before we ever got into this, make sure you have his information.
Is that the, uh?
It's, uh.
I don't know if I ever picked up a.
A list, um, he, we'll get, I can't remember who it was, I'll have to ask Scott, he was.
Well, is it like a W, I, I mean, we work in Fairview, so.
Yeah, he, he was, he, he does windows, he's always at our ACO deals, he came up here, and Scott walked through him and showed him all of our windows before we got decided we were gonna do.
Can Scott send us, send us that?
Yeah, well, between Cindy and Scott, we'll get that information to you, 'cause we wanna make sure he's included on that bid list.
Yeah, we'd like to have two to four numbers up for you on the windows, and then, uh, you know, so, uh, so if we can do that, then the, the other items that we did not get bid on was demolition, awnings, and, and, and the painting, and, and the awnings on the.
Over the, the, the.
Sheriff's office over here, uh, all of those are under fifty thousand, I will give you quotes. I will gather your quotes and bring them to you, and we're working on that now. So the only thing we gotta re-advertise is storefront, and if we get that, we're, we're, we're good to go, and I, and, and I guess my other question, the alternates, some of them you can look at now, let's just disregard those until I get my windows in, and, and everything, and I'll finalize this up for you to decide what you wanna do on alternates, and you'll know better on, on, closer on the money. Uh, the, um, but we do recommend that you let me lock all these people in up here by approving those. And, uh, usually what the commissioners do, and I'm not trying to tell you what to do, but, uh, you just go back up here and you make a recommendation that you approve bid package one, three, four, five A, five B, seven A, all of those. And you write them down, you log that in, and you approve all those in this meeting, we can contract them and get them under contract and get them going, but... And I guess, how do you feel about my budget at this point, I mean?
I think it looks good.
You're still under, so...
I think so.
So you're good, you're, okay.
We're good.
You can shave her another couple hundred thousand.
If you want to, yeah, but, but you're not scaring us.
Well, I mean...
The numbers look good.
We're, we're gonna run into some issues in this building when we start working on it. I mean, you don't have a hundred-year-old or, you know, close to a hundred-year-old building when you start working on it, that you don't run into something, uh, that you're, that is an unforeseen enough thing, we start breaking that off out front, all the old concrete off the jail, we may run into some issues underground that I don't know about, or things like that, you know, so, but a- a- again, we got a very healthy contingency here. I don't see where we have any issue if you'll approve these up here, the only place that, we've got four items left here that's gonna cause us any heartburn around money, and, uh, you know, I don't, I don't think we're gonna have any issue there with what we brought closure to on the windows here. Do you, Jim?
No.
I, I think we're in good shape, so, uh, so we're, we're gonna advertise Wednesday. I forget the exact date that the bids will come back in, then we'll come back in for one more process, so, um, uh, so we wanna get started.
And don't forget to advertise in our local paper.
Wednesday.
It's hitting on Wednesday.
Okay, got it, they've already got it, okay, great, great, great.
Before I, I'm, make this motion, I do wanna get something off my chest, and it's nothing to do with you guys.
Go ahead.
We are just finishing a three-million-dollar fairgrounds facility.
Uh-huh.
Ambler Architects, or no, uh, excuse me, AIP, A, AIP out of Norman, Oklahoma, was an architect.
Right.
And Crossland Construction was a construction manager.
Okay.
That we had. I felt, in the end, I felt that we needed somebody looking out for Grant County's interest to guide the construction manager and more so the architect on that deal. They knew what our budget was to begin with, and they were hell-bent on spending every penny. We spent twelve thousand dollars for two bathroom sinks that don't even have ledges on them. Thank God there's drains in the floor right next to them. I mean, that stuff makes me sick.
Okay.
And, and I, I just, like I say, it's nothing that you guys have done, but I am very cynical at this point. And this is, this is, this is our hard-working people's money. And, and that's very near and dear to, to everybody in this, within this group. Please don't let me think that we should've hired somebody to watch out for you guys.
Well, and, and, and I'm gonna tell you, most all my jobs, I give contingency money back on. We never enter a job, I don't, I don't, when, whenever I give you the numbers, if we do it for, with you, not using any contingency, I don't care. Crossland, Nappos, these big companies not gonna do that for you, they just send, they send, I work, I've worked people that work for these big companies. When you go to work for them, they send you to a class how to generate extras on you. I don't do that, you can ask this guy, and, and I have no interest in doing that, 'cause I wanna do phase two of this project. They don't care, they'll just move to Arkansas, they'll move up in Kansas, they'll go down Texas, and they just move around. Uh, anytime, now, don't get me wrong, big companies are really good when you have fifteen, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty million dollar projects. With three million dollar project, you should never hire Crossland Construction, I'll just tell you that right now. I can kick their ass any day, they won't even bid against me, okay? They'll construction manage, 'cause they outsell me, they got hell of a marketing department, and I don't. I come in with my hillbilly ways and try to sell projects, 'cause that's what I am, you know? That's what my family, that's everyone that works for us. We have trouble growing, 'cause we can't hire people that has the same morals and beliefs that we, we struggle with that. But I'm not gonna do that to you guys.
And, and, and we're looking at this from a standpoint, this needs to be a partnership between...
It's us three right here.
The county and, and you guys.
And we were talking out before we came in, you know, if we're three hundred thousand under your budget when we're done, you're gonna spend that money somehow.
Yeah, maybe phase two, it may be...
Hopefully with us, with us.
Yeah, we're looking...
So that's what we're, that's the way we look at it.
And you're gonna look at it and say, "Well, we're kind of a construction group, man, we're coming here, and they told us a million seven, they only spent a million four. They gave us three hundred thousand dollars back. We need to use those people again," and, and that's my sales pitch to you, if you don't believe, pick up a phone, call Park City Public.
Right, right.
Call anybody that's, that's worked with me on construction management, and, uh, they don't get the feeling at the end of the project.
How do you feel?
Uh, that, that, uh...
Yeah.
Because what they do is they send them to school and say, "We want you to generate six to eight percent uh, extras in this project, look for anything." And then I'm doing a job at McConnell Air Force Base for Walsh Group, and I don't know if that means anything to you, but they bought out Flank Co., which is how big they are, in two thousand eight, Flank Co. did one point three billion, is how big they are. And, and the Walsh Group's a lot bigger than them, they do a lot of government contracts. I bid this project up there, and I bid it at two hundred thousand dollars, it's a six thousand square foot roof. If you can put that in relationship here.
Yeah, huge.
They still, I've got them, the warranty, I'm done with it, they're still fighting me over the submittal. They put five million dollars general liability on me, I got a two hundred thousand dollar contract, what the hell am I doing with five million dollars general liability? Okay, they force all these things on you that drives your bid through the roof. This little six thousand square foot addition that they're doing, it's unitized tax dollars on the federal level. It's fifteen hundred dollars a square foot is how these big companies live. I don't get fifteen hundred dollars square foot to build a laboratory that's got MedGas, everything in it, you know, all the gases in it, so, you know, it, it, it's just silly. But I, I, and, and I'm not telling you, you made a mistake, I'm just saying, Crossland Construction Company doing a three million dollar project for you in Medford is not a good scenario. They're too big of a company, they drive your costs through the roof, and they're professional.
The, and the funny thing of it, I felt less put out with Crossland than I did the architect.
Yeah, 'cause the architect recommends the change orders.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I...
No, and, but anyway, that's, I just, I had to get that off my chest, because you can ask the other two, I was, I'd be very cynical about it.
He's gonna be watching ya, let's just go with him, he's gonna be watching ya.
And I hope you do, 'cause that makes us work better.
Yeah, he's gonna be watching ya.
And I will tell you something else, if, if, uh, you know, I, I had an architect that I won't work for anymore that come in and told me when I signed as a, a construction manager, he said, he pulled me over, said, "We don't do any dirty laundry in front of the owners." And I'm gonna say this in front of Jim, and I'm gonna say this in front of everybody. If I got dirty laundry to do here, I'm gonna bring it to you, if he's got it, I'm gonna bring it to you, if you haven't, I'm gonna bring it to you. This is a partnership.
Right.
That we all make mistakes, and if we got any issue, we need to bring closure to it and move forward. And whoever's fault it is, if we're gonna sit around and blame one another, you're not gonna get any place. So I won't, this architect, I will not, I told him, I said, I, and, and I just turned down a nine million dollar job that he's the architect on, I said, "I won't work for him." Okay, so, well...
Well, all that being said. Yeah, so, thank you for letting me do it. All that being said, I move to approve bid package number one, three, four, five A, five B, seven A, eight A, eight B, eight C, nine A, twenty-three, number twenty-six, and number thirty-one, for a total of seven hundred sixty-one thousand, eight hundred sixty-three dollars and three cents. I second that motion.
All right, Rock moved, has seconded to approve bid packets one, three, four, five A, five B, seven A, eight A, eight B, eight C, nine A, twenty-three, twenty-six, thirty-one, in amount of seven hundred sixty-one thousand, eight hundred sixty-three dollars and three cents. All in favor? Bobbit? Aye. Rawl?
Aye.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried unanimously. Are we good?
We need to approve any of this right now?
No, I'm getting quotes on it.
Okay, and so you're, you're going out Monday, or Wed-?
Wednesday.
Wednesday for bids on the, that, and then the other, we're just kinda tabling for now?
Gonna, gonna try to...
Days here, in that twenty-one days, I'm gonna gather your quotes.
Quotes.
And I'm gonna bring quotes to you.
'Cause it's under fifty.
Right, because it's under fifty thousand.
So, so you're gonna, you're gonna go ahead and do that now? I mean, here in the near future, not when you need it, you're...
He'll, he'll get back to us in, it's been three weeks.
Oh, okay.
He's gonna go and get some...
All I need them to do is to approve these subcontractors.
Yeah, right, right, right.
I don't want to do any action on any of this out here until I get you the final GM pick.
Got you.
Okay.
Now, in the meantime, what they'll do is
Start.
do their contracts with them, do the submittals.
What are you guys looking for is actual timeframe to get?
Started.
We talked about that earlier, it said probably thirty days they'll start mobile.
Thirty days they'll start mobile.
What, what do you, what do you see happening first? Or, or how many of these things are gonna be going in, in tandem with going on?
Well, I wish I had the windows, because really what I need to do is I need to be working on the masonry and the windows and, and the, and the HVAC, so let me kinda get you a schedule on this.
That'd be great.
And, and, uh, we've gotten, we're waiting on feedback from a couple of the subs as far as duration, what they realistically feel like it will take. Um, so hopefully I get that feedback soon.
And we don't need anything formal, it's just kinda nice to have the heads up.
Well, the biggest part of this job is gonna be coordinating with you all, because, so you'll need that.
Yeah, yeah, we...
Yeah, you'll work pretty close with Scott and Cindy Sue here to, you know, like, offices, you need things moved, and, you know, whatever you need out of us for everything.
Larry Hand will be our superintendent on the project, he lives in Blackwell, so he's got a very poor commute.
Larry?
Larry Hand, H-A-N-D, and we've got three Hands that work for us, so, uh... Ryan will be the project manager. Uh, if we, uh, need anybody to, to come to the, to the commissioners' meeting, issues or anything, I'll be here. I'm forty-five minutes away, so, uh, they'll just tell me, don't think you'll have that with Larry and Ryan. Uh, you know, so, uh, I, I think you'll be happy with what they're, what they're doing, and, and like I say, it's a team. If we approach this as a team effort, that's the way it'll get done, we won't spend a lot of money. Are we not gonna run into issues? Sure we are, but we just leave my closure to them and move forward with them.
Okay.
That's the reason I want you to approve the contingency, the contingency money's yours, it's not mine.
Oh, no, we'll approve that, when we get to that, when we get all this other laid out.
It's there, and then I don't, if, if, if there's something that's extra, I, I get hold of Amber, they create proposal requests, I go out and get prices on it, I send it to everybody, then the commissioners will approve it before I move forward with it.
Another thing, I'm not, nobody's gonna hold you to anything, but what do you think timeframe?
Five to six months is what we figured.
That's all?
Yep. Yeah, we're not doing a lot inside, so it's, uh...
We need to get our budget together for phase two.
Yeah, I'd say, we need to, once we get this kinda get started, we'd like to start looking at phase two, just kinda roll it in and try to keep the moving forward. Yeah, we'd like to just kinda do that.
And room foam on your, uh, remodels, like on the inside, five percent contingency, don't short yourself there, because it's just...
Yeah, that, we, we know we're gonna have electrical problems once you get behind our walls, we already know that, because we, we can't track it down now.
And it's really hard for us to see all that and know what's there.
Till you get it exposed.
'Cause like I say, I don't, I don't, I looked out there, one was a building built.
And so, like you said, don't worry so much about our tiles, you know, take the best and put them in some places, because we're probably gonna be talking about redoing those, so, so don't be doing, that's why I'd kind of like to go ahead and start talking about phase two, so you know where you are on this.
Yeah, we're, we wanna get your envelope sealed, and, and I, I've worked with a lot of people that they don't do that, the first thing we wanna do is stop any infiltration of moisture in the building, before you ever consider doing anything inside.
Absolutely.
You know, and I worked with, I, I, matter of fact, that one architect I said I wouldn't work with, I couldn't get him to seal the envelope. I just, three years, and I left, I fulfilled my contract obligations, and finally, Susan Chin called me back, said, "What do we need to do?" Ryan went over, we figured it out, and we just got the outside brick sealed, and we don't have leaks for the first time, and, and it was an old building just like this built, nineteen twenty-three. You know?
Well, we're sealing our outside, Ryan.
Yes.
Yeah.
All, all the outside of this building should be sealed, and it should be good, yeah. New roof, new windows, tuck pointing, sealing the brick, so, you're, you're in good shape.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, so, uh, so I appreciate it, appreciate y'all selecting us. If you're unhappy with anything, tell me, if you're happy with everything, tell everybody.
We got it.
That's, that's my sales pitch today, okay? And we want you to be just as happy at the end of the trail as you was at the beginning of it. And the only way I can do that is do you a good job of it.
It's gonna be a little painful.
Right.
Oh, yeah, we know that, yeah, we know that.
Yeah, so we're, we're gonna need to banish people in the building at times, like, I cannot do this and not do that.
Right.
And the remodel's gonna be worse than that.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, we, we definitely have to work around the judges, you know?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
We can't, that, that'll be, they'll, they'll get first choice of what happens at the time, timing frame, so, okay?
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Looking forward to getting...
Hope you get, hope you get another inch right.
Me too. Do we need to have you come back so we get that inch? Did you get that inch?
When I, when I did the job out at Fairview, someone went out and ran, so they wanted me to come.
We want you to come a little more often.
We haven't been out before, we're really dry.
Jim, thank you.
Thank you very much, safe travels, thank you.
We'll see more of each other.
Okay, all right.
You'll see more of him than you will me. Any issues, ownership will be here if you don't...
Sounds good.
We're not gonna have that with these guys.
Okay, all right.
Ryan, you've worked for us...
Going on eleven years now?
And I think Larry's worked for us twelve or fourteen years.
Oh.
Sounds good, all right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That brings us down to item number ten.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second that.
His motion, Rock seconded, adjourned at the ten thirty-eight AM, all in favor? Bobbit? Aye. Rawl?
Aye.
Yes?
Aye.
All ayes, motion adjourned.
You know, I looked at that, I knew it was your turn to make that motion on the, accepting the bid.